Hold me to order.
Okay. Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Hamm. Mayor Protem Bain.
Here.
Mayor Schwartz.
Here.
And Councilmember Ward is absent.
All right, I don't think we have a invocation.
No, we don't have an invocator.
All right, would you lead us? Please rise for a pledge.
Put your hand over your heart, repeat after me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2018-19 second quarter report and mid-year budget adjustments.
All right, so the mid-year financial report, which you received the other day, I'll go ahead and go through it, and first, whoops. We'll be covering the general fund revenues and expenditures, and we'll also be covering the major mid-year adjustments, and the comprehensive list was attached to the agenda report that you received. Whoops. All right, so just for a comparison to the previous years at this point, here's a look at the general fund revenues for the last three years, where we covered the last three years at this point. As you can see, in 1617, 1718, and 1819, we're all around 41%, 42%. So our revenues are coming in line with previous years and what I would say our expectations are for this year. Just kind of go into property tax, since that's one of the more, or one of the larger revenue sources for the city. We're recommending a mid-year adjustment of $825,000. The city received property tax, and where we are at this point, we anticipate receiving about $825,000 more this year than was originally budgeted. And you can see the past, in 16, we had $13 million, 14, last year, and 14.3. So you can see a little bit of a growth line there.
Does that 14 points, yeah, does that point, 14.3 include the additional $825,000 anticipated to come in?
Those are the actual receipts through December 31, 2018. So based on the actual receipts as of December 31, we're anticipating that we'll get $825,000
More.
More than what we budgeted for the entire year.
All right, thanks.
Sales tax, you can see this one kind of fluctuated a little bit over the last couple of years. We had 3.6, 3.4, and then 3.8 million. Oh, and there's, I must have, the mid-year adjustment is zero at this point, but we wanted to point out that, you can see, although it's fluctuating, the state did implement new reporting during last year, so there's been a little bit of a delay in receipts and all that kind of stuff. Although we are up from last year, the timing has kind of been a little skewed, and it's hard to really get a good feel for where we'll end the year. But we are estimating that, based on where we are and what our expectations are, that we'd be achieving budget this year. So whatever we budgeted will be coming in at budget. Transient occupancy tax, you can see 1.2 million, 1.2, and then 1.1. Again, we've been going through the whole STLU, and we actually budgeted a lot less this year, anticipating decrease in the revenues. What we're doing is we're coming back and kind of reassessing now that we're kind of halfway through the fiscal year, and we're recommending a mid-year adjustment of $325,000, which is an increase. So we, basically, I'll call it conservatively budgeted, and we're revising our expectations. We'll get a little bit more than what our conservative process was. General fund expenditures, again, the last three years, midway through the year, 30.3, 31.7, 33.6, and if you look, 44%, 42%, and 42%. So it's kind of, as a percentage of the total revenue, or the total expenditure budget, we're kind of in line with expectations from the previous years. Some of the general fund revenue mid-year adjustments, again, I covered some of these. Property taxes, transient occupancy taxes, ambulance services, they're coming in a little bit higher than what we expect. There's been a little bit more construction inspection fees. We've received a couple of larger payments during the year, so that we're bumping that number up. And then the other are just minor adjustments that we ran into, and a complete list is part of the agenda report that you have for you. The general fund expenditure mid-year adjustments, again, the biggest item was to the maintenance line items, and there's a variety of maintenance line items. You might remember the sailboat that washed ashore. Well, that took maintenance costs to remove, so there's some one-time factor in there, and just other contract changes and such. So we're asking for $67,000 between all the maintenance items, and then other general fund expenditure adjustments, we kind of netted those, and we're actually asking for about $8,800 less. So for total general fund expenditure changes, we're asking for $58,000 less. Kind of, once we've gone through the mid-year adjustments, and we reran the adjusted operating position, you might recall when budget was first adopted, we had about a $0.2 million operating position, so like around $200,000. You can see, because property taxes coming in higher, and transient occupancy tax, we're estimating that it'll be more around that $1.3 million mark. Again, it's kind of the budget. Actual results may vary from budgeted amounts, so. And other fund adjustments, I'll just call out a couple of these. Public infrastructure grant, we have the CDVG, we're asking for a little bit more revenue there. We're getting the revenue. Sewer connection fees, again, there was some construction activity, transfers in, you'll kind of look on the expenditures, there's also a transfers out. Those are basically both within the sewer fund, we're just moving some money from depreciation to the operating. And then other revenue changes net, again, a complete list is in the agenda report for Basically, what's next, we'll be covering the long-term financial plan, and then the fiscal year 2019, 2020 proposed budget is going to happen in May 2019. So if there's any questions, I can go ahead and handle those. If not, we'll get moving on to the next thing.
I had a quick question on the sailboat that washed ashore. We cleaned it up. Are we under subrogation or something going after the owner of that boat for those costs? To recoup those?
I can speak to that. So we actually worked with Hannah in risk management, and she's working with Lieutenant Peters. We were aware of the owner, and so we'll be going after the owner. Whether or not we can actually collect might be a different thing. I don't think this individual had a lot of financial means, but we're going to go after him nevertheless.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question on the sewer depreciation fund transfer. Is that usual practice to transfer from the depreciation fund to the operating? And then, I looked at years past, like we've done that, but never to the tune of $500,000. Can you explain that transfer?
Well, we've done that in some circumstances. Typically, and this kind of leads a little bit to the long-term financial plan, once we get to the reserve section, you'll see that our emergency reserves are not being met in the operating fund. So we're basically taking a little bit of money from the depreciation funds to move it over to make sure we have those emergency reserves in the operating fund. And keep in mind, that's where we're going through a cost of service study. I'll kind of touch a little bit more on it as part of the reserve analysis, but that's kind of a quick response to your question there. It does happen, and again, I would envision, once we get a little bit more money in the operating, when that has happened in the past, a lot of times we might move it over, but then, when we have available sufficient funding, we move the funds back in a future year.
A move that we approve, the fiscal year 2018-19 second quarter report, and two that we approve and authorize the mid-year adjustments listed in attachment A of the administrative report dated March 11, 2019, that's unfiled with the city clerk.
It's been a motion made by Councilmember Hamm, and seconded by Councilmember Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry unanimous.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Eric Sun, Assistant City Manager, so I'm going to go ahead and kick off our 2019 long-term financial plan. Really quickly, I want to just give some shout-outs to our project team. Brian Brower, Information Technology Manager. We have Sandy Cheswick, our Senior Accountant. Ken Nats, our Principal Engineer and Asset Manager. Jake Ron, our Financial Services Officer. And Michael Johnson, our Management Analyst. They've done a great job of putting this together in the timeframe, and then also we've had some changes in staffing, and they've been fantastic. Can I have the thing to go through, or you want to give me the mouse? So our 2019 long-term financial plan are more commonly referred to as the LTFP. Couple of things I think it's important to recognize as to why we do the long-term financial plan, keeping in mind, I think we're upwards of 23 years of doing our LTFP. A plan that identifies fiscal issues, challenges, and opportunities. It establishes fiscal policies and goals. It examines fiscal trends, establishes reserve policies, provides focus on long-term initiatives, and produces a financial plan, all the while helping to reinforce the city's longstanding AAA bond rating. In the 2019 LTFP, our financial core papers are the financial trends analysis, the financial forecasting, capital project analysis, our reserve analysis, fiscal policy, information technology strategic plan. We have a pension update paper, and we have a public safety overview paper. Areas of emphasis, one of the things, and it's been consistent in our LTFP and our budget the last three, or if not four, years, these themes continue to play out. So obviously, one area being the rising public safety costs. So with OCSD, or our Orange County Sheriff's Department, right now, what we call the first estimate for fiscal year 1920, we're getting proposed 2.67%. But it's important to note, and it'll be going over into more depth when the public safety overview paper is done, all of the bargaining units with OCSD expire June 30 of 2019. All of those bargaining units are in negotiations, and those negotiations won't land until the fall. We're going to be forecasting an additional $150,000 for those MOU costs, which will be effective July 1 of 2019, regardless of whether they have an MOU landed or not. Once they land the MOU, they'll send us a bill going back to July 1, and we know that a good portion of this will be relative to the deputy's MOUs. And so, again, I'll leave that, Mike will go over that a little bit more in the public safety paper when we get there. OCFA projects a 4.5% increase for the next several years of the base contract. And then we also have the cost of the fourth firefighter phased in in the beginning of fiscal year 19 and 20. On the pension side, all of our pension contributions are increasing. So we'll be going over that in our pension paper. We have four different pension plans that we have to deal with. All of those costs are increasing, and then also our public safety contracts are also impacted, as I mentioned earlier. Legal costs, we know that we're seeing legal costs at a relatively different level than it has been in past years, but we're continuing to be diligent with the council and with our legal city attorney in mitigating those costs, and also doing our best as we have lawsuits that come up and bringing those forward to the council. And then number four, funding infrastructure and maintenance reserves. I think it's important to note, and this will be something that you'll see in the reserves, for many years, the city of San Clemente did not fund reserves as related to maintenance. And I completely understand why they didn't do that, was because they needed to present a balanced budget during recession. But once we started looking at that, and Ken will go over this in his paper as well, we have a lot of deferred maintenance. And we're never going to catch up, but we need to start putting aside money to address those deferred maintenances. And as Ken will go over in our CMMS, or Computerized Maintenance Management System, where we're ranking highest priority or highest risk to be addressed first in terms of liability. And so that's something that we're going to continue to be diligent on from a funding standpoint. Also, we want to be identifying the assets and determining those funding needs. Just like HOA, you have a replacement reserve to replace your bench, and you want to make sure that you have adequate money set aside, so when that bench wears out over its life, there's money there to replenish it without having to go back into the general fund. And then again, stressing the need to fund reserves for the long-term sustainability. So with that, we're going to jump into trends analysis, and Jake Ron, the Financial Services Officer, will give his presentation.
So the trends, before we get into the forecast, which is obviously looking forward, we kind of take a look back and see where we're at and how the past trends have been going. So what we've done is analyzed 21 trends, and they're kind of broken into different categories. Revenues, expenditures, operating position, debt, unfunded liability, and community trends. As you can see, on the right-hand side, we kind of have the more favorable, favorable with caution, and on the left-hand side, we've got the warnings or unfavorable aspect of things. And just, I mean, I'm not going to go into each of the trends ad nauseam, because again, we're kind of, the goal of this is to look forward. You can see, over the last four years, we haven't had any warning or unfavorable trends. We've been moving, as the economy improved, as the city planned things, as the city had development, we moved towards all of things having favorable or favorable caution. And that's just the one thing that I wanted to point out, that we are moving in the right direction, and it's not so much that we're having to deal with significant economic items that are causing warning trends going forward, or unfavorable that are showing up. So again, with that, I'm not going to go into each of the trends, it's a variety of different things, it's in the report, but just to kind of give you a snapshot of things before we move into the forecast, I thought I'd present this slide. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the financial forecast.
Jake? So what does the forecast tell us? Well, we're projecting a negative operating position in the next, in the last four years of the forecast. Property tax revenues continue to rise, and sales tax remains relatively flat. Contracted expenditures, again, public safety, pension, et cetera, exceed projected revenue growth. And then also, we're projecting a $6.3 million unassigned fund balance at the end of fiscal year 1819 before capital improvement costs. I think it's important to note that, you know, when we're applying the financial forecast, we're looking at best business practices. We're also taking into consideration the GFOA standards as it relates to many things, and when we get to our sustainability, or actually emergency general fund reserve, we'll cover that as well with regards to the percentage that we have that set forth. For 2019 on the forecast for revenue, so operating revenues, we're seeing about a 2.9% annual increase over the forecast period. So, you know, again, 3% is kind of online, property tax, 50% of the general fund operating revenues, as Jake indicated, and this year, 4.6% increase in year one, and then 3.7% average increase for the remaining four years. So property tax is continuing to look good going forward in the coming years. Sales tax, while it's 15% of the general fund operating revenue, we're seeing 0% increase in year one. We're not assuming any additional revenue for the San Clemente retail outlets or the Estrella, and this is something that we've practiced a couple of years now. It's easy to put $300,000 in there and hope for the best, but then when it doesn't show up, we're then coming back, and mid-years would look a little bit different with that lack of that. So we're taking the conservative approach. Obviously, there are developments that are on the horizon, both with regards to the hotel and potential expansion of the San Clemente outlets, but again, without anything concrete, we're just not going to budget revenues to reflect that. 2% average net increase for the remaining four years as it relates to sales tax as well. So not seeing a significant amount of growth in sales tax, and as we've talked about before, brick and mortar is becoming kind of a thing of the past, and e-online ordering via the internet is becoming more of the mainstream for many people. For the forecast of expenditures for fiscal year, or for year 2019, operating expenditures are about 4.1% annual increase over the forecast period. Salaries and benefits, so we have forecasted positions based on current approved positions, and then we have our MOU, which is a three-year agreement that comes to an end in fiscal year 1920. Just a real quick recap with regards to that, we had a 3% or 3.1% increase for the first year. We provided a small increase in city-paid portion of the health insurance, and then the employees paid an additional 1.1% share of pension costs for each of the three years. So at the end of fiscal year 1920, full pickup of employee portion of the pension, which is 7%, was achieved. So we've kind of gotten the employees to work with us collaboratively to also, you know, get a little bit of money in the pocket while also meeting their 7% pension obligation, which is a nice achievement that we've made. Again, on the expenditure side of it, so our city pension plans, we talked earlier about four. So we have CALPERS, which is all of the general employees after June 2014. That includes actives, inactives, and retirees. Then we have what we call the EMPOWER, but it's actually the city of San Clemente, that acronym will be spelled out later, I can never remember it. That's our miscellaneous general employees before 2014, and CASA. So for instance, if you worked at the city and left in 2012 but didn't retire, your account still stays in EMPOWER until you retire, or if you're a CASA employee, which is an active employee, you're in there as well. And again, this is a defined benefit program, just like CALPERS, the same defined benefits are available or given to all of those individuals as well. Then we have our CALPERS Safety Lifeguard Pension Plan for Marine Safety, which obviously includes actives, inactives, and retirees. Then we have our CALPERS Safety, which is our previous or prior police and fire employees, which are just inactive or retirees. So with regards to pension increases, we have some phase-in and assumption changes. So the discount rate with CALPERS has gone from 7.5% to 7%, and there's been a three-year phase-in at 7.25% in year 1920. And then in the EMPOWER program, we've gone to a discounted rate of 7.25% to 6.25%. Other actuarial assumptions, we have a CALPERS 2017 experience study that changed mortality rates, inflation, and salary scale. You know, the bottom line for that is, and this is a good thing, is people are living longer. And so as people are living longer, we have to revisit these plans to make sure that we're going to be able to pay them for the duration of their life. So that's something that was taken into consideration in 17. And then in the amortization period reduction, CALPERS reduced their amortization period from 30 to 20 years, and those impacts begin to be felt in 2021, 2022. CALPERS, and this has been an ongoing dialogue that CALPERS has had, is they really want to have a plan where they can achieve funding status. They don't want a 30-year plan that never achieved funding status. So they began the 20-year plan to really look at, in 20 years, achieving funding, 100% funding status. And so that was the reason for that. How are we addressing pension increases? Well, we have PEPRA, which over time will evolve as more employees phase out and new employees come in. The PEPRA will provide a better financial impact to the city of San Clemente because they pay a significant portion of their pension rates versus what they call the classic members. MOU changes, obviously, we're going to have to be conscious of those things in terms of what we're able to afford to give and living within our means with that as we come up to our three-year MOU expiring. And then one-time payments, whether it's budget savings or one-time revenues, we really want to be careful, because we've known that we have a deficit in the looming years, and we're always trying to make sure as we get closer to that, we're building up that one-time bucket of money to be able to address CIPs and other one-time costs in the future. Fiscal policy changes, which will be a discussion that Jake gives in his pension paper, which I think will be really good. And then also improving transparency, the LTFP Trends and Budget Summary is something that really helps provide a good snapshot of where the city is at this given time from a financial perspective. Police services contract, so like I said, we have the first estimate, we're looking at about 15, I want to round up, 15.9 million, and then I've talked about setting aside $150,000 to address MOU increases that are forthcoming. That 2.67% increase results in about $412,000. This is an increase that doesn't change services, it's the exact same staffing levels that we're currently in, it's just based on their increased costs. Talked about the MOUs. Future years, we're looking at averaging 4% increase. The forecast does not make any assumptions or changes related to future staffing. So one thing that we're always adding on is 4% increase in public safety in the future years, hoping that it comes in around there, so we can be able to be prepared to address that.
Real quick question. In prior years, I think from the Sheriff's Department, we have gotten their first estimate, and it's been low, and then it's gone up in other months without any MOU changes. Is that correct?
Well, last year, it started off at about 5.85% increase, and then it went up from there, whereas in the previous three years, it came in high and then went down as we got deeper into the budget process.
So was last year any part of their raises, or that was years prior, wasn't it?
It was years prior, yeah.
So I think that's what I'm afraid of, and I want to impart to the council, is we got a low estimate, and we were planning on that, and then it came in a lot higher. Okay.
Mr. Sun, does the 15.8 million include the second deputy that was approved by the prior council that was not added? Is that assuming that?
The current staffing levels include the two deputy positions that were added.
And one is filled and one is not, right?
That is correct. One is vacant currently in anticipation of being filled, and one is filled.
Okay, so that won't move. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. One thing that I want to point out, and I think it's good to note, is as we're seeing these increases, we know in the future year, OCSD has already told us, the next cost increase that we have to be aware of is the body told us, the next cost increase that we have to be aware of is the body cameras. And so while they've implemented body cameras, they are going to be required from a records retention standpoint to be able to provide that footage via a public records request. And so I suspect, and they've already told us, it's not in this coming year's estimates, but I suspect in the next year or two, we're going to see, I'm going to call it, a new division within OCSD that's staffed with a couple of sworn and then some non-sworn personnel to manage that records program. Because if I understand correctly, there'll be a 48-hour requirement of turnaround time for the video, and they have to keep the video for a year. And so a lot of, all the police departments in the state of California, if not United States, are dealing with this new element in transparency as it relates to public safety. And so they've given us the heads up, and we know that'll be coming. I think it's important to note, just because Mike will go over it in his public safety paper, but a fully loaded deputy, as of right now with this first estimate, a fully loaded deputy is $266,792. This doesn't include your MOU increases, as I discussed, and there's also equipment and overhead that's not factored into that cost. A motor is a little bit more in terms of a fully loaded cost, it's $271,984. And again, that doesn't include the MOUs or the overhead cost as well. And then, just to give you an example, a CSO, which is a non-sworn position, fully loaded is $119,732. Now, it's also subject to the MOUs and the overhead cost, but just to give you some perspective in terms of public safety costs. Fire services contracts, so our first estimate is $9,372,674. We have a projected increase of 7.63. Now, I know some of you are going to go, well, the contract only allows them a cap of 4.5. That is correct. However, in this cost, it also includes the fourth firefighter that will start to see that cost, which I believe is $180,000. It also includes maintenance, which is separate from the fire contract. So that's why you're seeing that. We're going to, obviously, in future years, we anticipate seeing a continued 4.5% increase. As they have told us, I think it's the next three or four years, we'll be seeing that cap be fully exercised. And then obviously, the cost of the fourth firefighter, which in 2024, '25, the fully loaded cost is $700,000. And something we just learned, and we're digging down on it, the original estimate was going to be $160,000 in fiscal year 1920 for the fourth firefighter. It's come in at $180,000. So we saw a $20,000 increase that we're reaching out to understand why that is, because I suspect those increases will compound over the next seven years. Ambulance program, so as you're aware, we, we got away from OCFA, and OCFA didn't want to provide ambulance services, and the city went out to an RFP for a private ambulance provider. We awarded a contract to care ambulances. Per their contract, there's a 6.2% increase, which equates to $72,000. The program includes services for two full-time ambulances that are stationed in our fire stations with our firefighters for a total annual cost of $1.28 million. So for the operating position for the forecast of 2019, our operating revenues, as you can see for fiscal year 1920, we're looking to see a projected surplus of $300,000. But then again, in years 2021, '21, '22, and so forth, we begin to see the deficit. And so, again, I'm going to get ahead of it. You know, there's always this thought of, we always show the next four years having a deficit, yet we always are able to come out as a balanced budget. I can't stress, and I'm not taking credit for this, I'll give it to my predecessor, we always budget conservatively on all fronts. And so we, by doing that, we're always allowed to be able to come under budget. We're never one to live beyond our means or budget things that we don't know if we're going to seek the revenue for. And every time we get a balanced budget, it's a, it's a testament to that exact practice of being conservative with regards to that. So I commend my predecessor, and we're going to continue with that conservative approach to maintain a positive position with the City of San Clemente's budget. Projected unassigned fund balance excluding capital projects. And so as you can see, in 2021 and so forth, we begin to see the negatives come into play with that. The next slide just compounds that when you add the capital projects into that list. Now, again, we always have our six-year capital improvement project schedule, but we always reanalyze the priorities of those projects as money becomes available. And again, we'll lean on Lucidity, our CMMS program, to basically prioritize highest risk to lowest risk. So when we have to make hard decisions, we're making decisions that eliminate risk for the city or exposure. General fund assigned reserves, so this is what I was talking about earlier with regards to the GFOA and practices. I want to say it was two fiscal years ago, or two LTFPs, we had a discussion with the council about our emergency reserves and what the appropriate amount is. As today, our emergency reserve's at 20% of our operating expenditures. So as you can see, our emergency reserves start at 3.3 million, and by '23, '24, we'll be at 15.7 million. Those are all forecasted, and those are all practiced as we go into the budget cycle.
13.3, not 3.3.
Thank you for that correction. 13.3. So again, these are all forecasted and built into our budget, so we plan accordingly to continually replenish the emergency reserves to meet that 20% operating expenditure for our general fund assigned reserves.
It was two years ago, because I looked at the video of our LTFP, and one thing that we were worried about was, like, our parks, our reserve fund for our parks, it wasn't completely funded. And so when we, in the past, the prior councils have said we have to put in all the money for those reserves, and that's what we've been doing, is trying to, that's what I think you just showed, was what we've been trying to put in. It, I wasn't a member of the council in the downtime. I think Chris might be, you weren't either? It was Lori and Tim, and, okay, so that's why I put in so much money for the reserves, is because we are looking at a downtrend coming, and we will not be able to pull money out to, to fix things in the future, because the money's not going to be there. I wanted, this is the part where I want to tell you, I saw my first foreclosure the other day on the internet for San Clemente, and I, I hate to see that trend, but I think that's, that's going to be coming. It's the first one. So I think we can't rely, you said the sales tax is looking good, I mean, the property tax is looking good?
Yes.
I think we're seeing properties stay on the market longer, and people are not moving as, as often. And so I'm not even sure we can count on an increase in the property tax as much as we have been. So I just wanted to impart that. But the, the reserve balance has been a big deal for the, the councils in the past.
Mr. Sun, I'm so, I'm concerned about the CIP projects, if you could go back to that slide. Yes, I pushed my button. On the CIP slide, yeah. So we basically can't do anything unless we start beefing up our unassigned reserve balance.
And as I go back to the original discussion of we're looking at closing out this year with 1.3.
Right.
Keeping in mind, we have a number of reserves that we're already establishing, both our park maintenance reserve, where we have money that we're putting away to deal with deferred maintenance costs. And so if we were to try to do everything in the CIP budget as projected, this would be the result. But as we've dealt with every CIP cycle, we don't do everything. We look at what is more important and what isn't. So, you know, a good, a good point, example I'll give to the council, and this is a real-time example, is we had an individual recently raise the issue of the Benigna Canyon tennis court, and it's been closed for some time. And that had been in the budget for many years as a project that was about $450,000. And it got deferred because other projects took precedence, for instance, the pier, or base of pier restrooms, or Vista Bahia restrooms. And so when we look at what's important and what's not, that's when we deal with that prioritization. And, you know, it's hard, I'm not discrediting anything, but for $450,000 for one tennis court, when the underlying problem is a soil erosion problem that created some structural deficiencies within the tennis court, is that money well spent? It was in the CIP project list, but is it really the right thing to do at this time? And so again, the CIP analysis looks at things and goes, this is not something that we want to do at this time. We'd rather divert our monies that are available to the pier project or other more priority projects. So it's all about decisions at the end of the day on prioritizing.
Right. And those will be decreasing as come, I agree with Councilmember Ward, you know, we've been eight years with a strong economic streak, and that's going to change if you look at economic cycles.
You know, there's, there's been some discussion of forecasting a recession, you know, they said 2019 was the year of the recession.
It's inevitable, though. It's inevitable if you look at history.
So, you know, we're prepared.
Yeah. And the Federal Reserve is, is, you know, loosening up on increasing the rates. So, you know, there's a lot of indicators, especially if you look at other countries too, like China, their economy's slowing, and Europe is looking ways to, you know, enhance and stimulate their economy. And, I mean, it, just in the Treasury, you know, if you look at that, they're not paying down their obligations. So there's a lot of factors we need to really consider in our own budget that will be impacting us. I, I don't, I don't see as strong a property taxes climbing like this indicates in the, over four years. But anyway, my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah. And what I, what I think is important for all of us to understand is, what we're looking right now is that unassigned, unassigned fund balance. We're not looking, you know, we built up reserves, which we then spend the reserves on the, on the projects that the reserves were established to fund. So, you know, the money flows, our revenue comes in, and then we, we portion it to various reserves to pay for capital improvements as we go along. And then what we're talking about now is the portion of the money flowing in that we haven't assigned directly to any specific reserve or a specific tax. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
And I think, I mean, you know, if, if I had a, as part of the forecast, obviously the councils in the future years are going to have some hard decisions to make, because there's not going to be as much money to do all of the CIP projects that we would like to do. Keeping in mind, the one thing that's static, and Tom Bonniget is constant reminder of this, is our street fund that's outside of the unassigned fund balance in our operating reserve. So one thing, and I can probably give a little bit of a shout-out to our previous Public Works Director, Bill Cameron, was very adamant about maintaining over a million dollars annually to the general, the general fund funds, the street improvement program, because the streets are, you know, key to the infrastructure within the city in terms of maintaining it. So there are many things that happen outside of the unassigned fund balance that address infrastructure needs as well. But again, to the capital projects, we'll have challenges.
Sorry, one other question I wanted to see. I know, like, we have CIP projects, like the pier rehabilitation, and I know, like, Pier Pride is looking at doing projects for this upcoming year. Have we reached out to them in terms of what amount of money that they may be willing to put towards some of the CIP projects?
So it's interesting, me and James just had this conversation, very much like the Friends Foundation. Every year, they give us a budget, and they tell us what their budget will do, whether it's, you know, the scholarship program, or swim classes, et cetera. And I think that's something that we're going to be talking to all of our nonprofits about, and I shouldn't say nonprofits, our partners, about, you know, all of you are here to help us. So in the coming year, what can you do, or what do you want to propose in terms of your allocation of maintenance as it relates to Pier Pride, or to the Friends, or to any other foundation out there in terms of helping offset general fund dollars? So we'll be doing that.
Be great, because I mean, you said opportunities earlier, my, my ears perked up, and I underline that, because I mean, there's got to be a lot of grant funding and things like that out there as well. Have we identified as part of this process, or will we, grant funding for some of these capital improvement projects? So obviously, as we move forward and every dollar becomes more important, we can leverage that money with grant funding.
Absolutely. And through the OCTA and other means, we'll definitely be continuing to be diligent on the grants.
Over the past couple of years, we've looked for grant funding for the pier, and it's been a little slim out there for what we can access. Pier Pride did recently reach out to me about a potential project. We have the, the restrooms at the end of the pier that need to be rehabilitated. I think it's about a quarter-million-dollar project. And so they reached out about helping us out with that project. So that's something that Ken and Tom and Eric and I need to talk about.
Great. And I don't mean just the pier, I just, in terms of prioritizing bud, you know, budgeting and CIP items, I think it's important to know where we may have additional funding that we can bring in, and may help prioritize projects based on that, so.
Yeah. To tie into that, I know we were working for more funding, grant funding, to expand the trolley this coming year. So, you know, is, is that revenue or grant money already in this, or that's just going to be added to it with an offset with the, the trolleys we acquire?
I'm going to look to Tom Bonniget to answer that question, since he's our trolley guru.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Swartz and council members. Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. So I'll work with finance to make sure, but I have worked to, the short answer is, we already have an OCTA grant for the trolley expansion that you're talking about that will start this summer. So, and I've put in a sheet in the CIP program that shows how the match for the city will work and when those grants start phasing out. So right now, it should be baked in, is the short answer.
Thank you.
So with questions, what's next? So specifically, we have a proposed budget workshop, budget public hearing on Wednesday, May 22, at 4:00 PM here in the council chambers. And we're forecasting to have budget adoption on the night of Tuesday, June 4, the 2019. So with that, if there's no questions, we'll go to the next presentation.
No questions from council members? All right, let's go.
All right. So we'll just go ahead and get into the reserve analysis. Basically, when we look at reserves, we kind of categorize it into three different categories. The operational reserves, the capital infrastructure reserves, and emergency reserves. And then again, the base or the foundation of the reserves is the emergency reserves. It just makes sure operations and capital projects can continue to go on, and we've got funds set aside. So in the case of unforeseen events, we have resources available. So capital infrastructure reserves, again, is to properly, properly maintain facilities. So if those needs arise, we have those funds available. And operational, or operational reserves allow for the smoothing of costs, so that, I'll call it a one-time hit, doesn't necessarily cause this big blip. We can kind of smooth those costs over the long term. So that's kind of the different reserve categories that we have out there. So I'll just go into each of the categories and kind of touch on some of the recommendations that came from the paper. Again, emergency reserves, we're not really recommending any changes to the funding levels. Again, it's 20% of operating expenditures for the general fund. And for enterprise fund emergency reserves, it's set at 12% of operating expenditures. You know, just as a side note, sewer and golf course operating emergency reserves are not properly funded. But as you recall from, I think it was the meeting two times ago, sewer cost of service is currently going through the process. And then also, there is some action going through the golf course committee to revise rates. So just, so that's on council's agenda at some point in the future. Reserve changes, again, capital infrastructure reserve, transfer $380,000 from the general fund to the facilities maintenance reserve. That consists of setting aside some funds for the pier and other replacement projects as we go through. We're recommending a transfer of $400,000 from the general fund to the park asset reserve, as you may recall. Vista Hermosa is starting to get a little, it's been around for a little while, so now we're running in a little bit more turf replacement. And also, we have playground equip, wait, excuse me, playground equipment replacement projects that have been going through. There was a plan adopted, I want to say about three or four years ago, to kind of go through and do various equipment replacement projects, playground. So we're going through and identifying those and doing those as we go through the process. And direct staff, one of the, one of the key things that's going to be coming up in the future is storm drain charges. Within the next couple of years, kind of like the sewer cost of service, storm drain charges are going to have to be reviewed, just so that cost demands, the cost demands that are placed on the public infrastructure kind of are reassessed. And I think the last time that was changed was back in the 1990s, not including those clean ocean fees, but I'm talking just storm drain charges. And this one, I kind of separated a little bit. The capital infrastructure reserves is direct staff to analyze capital asset categories and identify assets funded for replacement in the facilities maintenance reserve. Again, this is, now that we've got Lucidity and CMMS coming along, this has kind of been on the radar for like the last two, three years, just to let council know that we're going to get to a point where we're going to sit down and say, all right, these ones we want to include in the reserve, these ones are just more maintenance-related items. these ones are just more maintenance-related items. So, really, we're taking a look at, I'll call it, more the capital needs of the reserves, and not routine maintenance smaller items types, items. So, it, it's just going to lead to a little bit more of analysis and clarity as to what specific projects or activities are related to each of the reserves. So, for example, we have the park asset reserve, you know, a restroom at a park, would that be covered under the facilities maintenance or the park asset? Right now, park asset, we're only treating it as equipment, the playground equipment replacement and turf. So, that's something we need to sit down and make sure we're properly identifying and setting aside reserves properly. Operational reserves, we're recommending a transfer of 225,000 from the general fund to the accrued leave reserve. And again, this is setting aside money for paying out employees who leave employment of the city to make sure that their vacation time that's paid out is kind of set aside, and it's, it's being recorded properly, and that we have assets available to pay that. So, unless there's any questions, that kind of concludes the reserve.
Council members, any questions? Do we have a motion to make?
If you want, we can wait till the end and make all the motions at the same time. I think we've done.
I don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Going to have someone read the motion? Hey, Dan, it's your turn.
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to analyze capital asset categories and identify assets funded for replacement in the purpose section of the capital equipment reserve, the facilities maintenance reserve, and the park asset reserve after Lucidity's implementation. Two, transfer an annual amount of 380,000 from the general fund to the facilities maintenance reserve for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Three, transfer 400,000 from the general fund to park asset reserve for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Direct staff to review the storm drain charge within the next couple of years to determine a way to meet the cost demands placed on the city's public storm drain system. And five, transfer an amount of 225,000 from the general fund to the accrued leave reserve for fiscal year 2019 to 2020.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, so, motion made by Councilmember Bane, seconded by Councilmember Ferguson. All in favor? Okay, hold on, please. Do we have a card? Mr. Malamud?
Hi, I didn't, I wasn't sure how this worked, but I just want to note, I sent you guys all a letter. I think this is not a plan at all, it's called Long-Term Financial Plan, it shows deficits. Eric's been very forthcoming, and he said we're going to have long-term losses of 23.5 million. He's actually add 6.3 to that. So, capital, if you start doing capital expenditures today, within the end of the year, there's going to be nothing left. The only thing left in your general fund is going to be emergency funds. So, when you make capital expenditures today, you can't make them down the line, there's no money there. What's troublesome to me is this isn't a financial plan at all. What this is, is it shows statistics and projections. Nowhere in there does Eric's just, or anybody, Mr. Matchinoff sent the letter, how we're going to fund these 23 and a half million dollars. We can defer forever, Eric's right, we could do no maintenance. But if you start spending money today willy-nilly, like you're going to approve right this second, you're not going to have any money tomorrow. Just understand, this money is baked in, as Eric said, and he's right, and you're going to have no money left. It's, I think it's critical, and I hope I can speak later to this issue, that you understand that this whole report is obfuscation and empty rhetoric. There's nothing here that tells this, this council how to prepare the budget and how to find this money. There is no money to create reserves down the line. And if, if Laura and Kathy are right, and I believe they are, income's going to go down, not up. You know, it just, it's the nature of the recession that's going to come. So, we don't have money in the city, we're technically bankrupt at the end of the year. Even though we've reserved for things, we have no unassigned funds at the end of the year. And that means there is no money to do that project that you want to do. There's nothing, there's zero. Unless you have it in a reserve, you can't fix it. And Kathy's right on top of this, I mean, it's, we are in dire straits. The fact that this report doesn't say we're in dire straits, I challenge anybody to tell me that we're going to just defer 29.9 million dollars of future capital improvements that are needed. We went the wrong way, we went from 27 million dollars to, I don't know, 13 million now, 15 million? Over two years, we spent 6 million a year in unassigned reserves. The current budget calls for the last six. At the end of the year, there will be none. And this is not prominently told anywhere. You just get that one second-to-last chart that Eric showed you that shows this unassigned going down to negative 23 million. You can't do that, by law, you can't go negative. That means the only way to do that is to use your emergency funds, and that still doesn't, that only funds 13 million of the 29. This is a sham, I want to tell you, it's accurate, but it's a sham. What isn't being told to you is more critical than what is being told to you. Somebody needs a plan, there needs to be a plan in place to fund these obligations, and it's not in this report. Now, whether other places will have that number, I don't know. But the other sham is that this was provided to the residents on Thursday, and we're expected to go through 120 pages and understand report. It's not possible for me to do it, I doubt it's possible for any of you to do this. I think this thing should be sent back to the staff to find a way to fill these holes. Thank you.
Any other comments from council before we vote? Okay, I'll ask for the vote again. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
You said that you wanted to vote as you went along. Did you want to vote on the financial forecast at this time or later? That was the reserves, right?
Mr. Malamud, just to clarify, the motion was only asked to reserve analysis, so you'll have a chance to talk to the remaining items that way. So, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation, continue efforts to identify infrastructure assets and the reserve resources needed to maintain and/or replace those assets based on a comprehensive asset management plan that will be developed through the use and optimization of the CMMS.
I have a motion made, a motion made by Bane, seconded by the, the group of council members, Ham and Ward. It was a joint second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimous.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Ken Nats, Principal Civil Engineer, and I'll be discussing the capital project analysis tonight. Presentation tonight's divided into two different segments. First, we'll cover projects with valuations of 1 million or more that are funded from the general fund in the six-year capital outlay, aka significant projects. And then later on, we'll touch upon how the city's looking and developing and leveraging the data that's related to our infrastructure with regards to the maintenance management system to better plan and budget for our future. So, with that, we'll just jump right into the projects that are in your listing. This is a snapshot of the latest CIP that will be brought forward to the council in the budget workshop in a couple, in a few months, in the 19, 1920 budget cycle. This was put together by our CIP committee. To speak to Mr. Sun's point, we review the budget annually to look at priorities, as well as work with the city manager's office to look at the unassigned fund balance. The two projects, the Avedina Del Mar Electrical Tree Services Rehab and the Steed Park Lighting Replacement Project, are two projects that will be brought forward and proposed in the 1920 budget. The, the remaining projects on the list are going to be projected in the six-year outlay, but they're there for council's knowledge, to be aware of that they're significant in nature, and funding obligations will be needed to, to realize those projects. In regards to the financial forecast, I know the, the chart looks very negative. It, it drops off in fiscal year 2021. Those numbers actually come from last year's six-year capital outlay. If I may, I'd just like to add that 5 million of that funding has to do with the Presidio, or this facility, and the concept that we were going to potentially do the Negocio improvements and improvements at this facility at the same time. Obviously, the city committed to consolidating services at Negocio. So, therefore, in, what will come in the outlay is a Presidio facility use study, so the council can look at opportunities for the building. But that 5 million dollars as far as a projection for improvements has been removed from these, from the, from the outlay, so it's no longer there. So, I'm, I'm, I think that little adjustment makes the chart kind of rectify itself, probably keeps us in the negative operating position, but helps, helps an improvement. And I think, to speak to Councilmember Ferguson's point, those adjustments that we're constantly making annually through the CIP, I think a good example is the, the Beaches master plan, the Beaches restroom master plan. About, many, many years ago, the council stepped forward to rehab all the beach restrooms for a total of about 2.7 million dollars. What it, what occurred was, that was outlay, that was through the, through the LTFP process. We realized the master, the, the improvement at the base of pier for, you know, more than half a million dollars. But what happened after that was staff went back and reevaluated, and looked at level of service of the facility, and worked with the council to say, look, council, we can, we can provide a full rehab and make it beautiful, and, 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 you know, kind of have it ace, an ace standard, or we can provide, you know, 50 or 60 thousand dollars and go in and improvement, and provide a nice asset for the community to use. So, that's kind of what happened in the beach, with the beach restrooms. We spent about 60,000 at Boca Del Canone and T Street. So, we reduced that, that, that potential impact of the general fund. And in fact, we're doing that consistently annually with the CIP committee. So, obviously, the intent is to provide the best, the best CIP listing for, for the most bang for the buck for the community, in line with realizing kind of the unassigned fund balancing needs, and trying to balance all those efforts. So, I'm, I'm going to speak to Avedina Del Mar and the Steed Park Lighting. Before I move on from that, I'd, I'd be happy to address any other questions on, on the remaining of the list. Since those are in the outlay, I won't be covering any of those details tonight. But we can cover those in, in the, in the budget workshop when we present the outlay as well. Okay, so, on Del Mar, real quick, basically, these improved, the streetscape improvements were put in in the mid, in the mid-'80s. They've seen their useful life, you can see the tree well is, is overgrown, the pedestals there. Those pedestals are used for all the special events. The service, the, the capacity of those services does not meet current standards. Currently, what happens when maintenance sets up for special events, I don't know if you've ever seen, they run a lot of cables in the gutters, and that's because of those protect, those particular outlets don't really function, and they're, they're a safety concern. So, what's proposed is to go ahead and rehabilitate the street conduit and the street trees to address that concern. The limits of those projects, of that project, go from El Camino Real down to Caixaville, and it's both sides. We've proposed 200,000 for design of the project in 2020. And then, in fiscal year 2021, we would go ahead and, and construct that project for a total estimated cost of 2.1 million. So, in next year's, in this current year's budget, what we bring forward to the council is 100,000 dollars, we budgeted 100,000 last year, we received proposals, it wasn't sufficient enough. Obviously, it's a high-impact, high-visibility project, there's going to be a lot of community outreach, you're going to hear about it from your business owners. It's going to be a very difficult project. But what our maintenance staff are telling us is that we're playing with fire. And, you know, it, it may, if we let this thing go for too much longer, it'll impact special events. And it's also interesting to consider that for all the maintenance that we're doing out there to provide for the special events, that's taking away from our proactive preventive maintenance program, because our folks are out on overtime, trying to set up through these events, so what's taking away from their day-to-day jobs. So, that's the reason this project is proposed. Any questions on that?
Does that project, are we touching any of the trees?
The, the plan is to replace the trees, because they've overgrown the, those tree wells. The planter boxes, I understand, were never set up. Their roots and the trees are, in fact, I've heard are infected. I think, obviously, as part of coming back to the council with that project, there'll be plenty of opportunities for the community to put their fingerprint on this project, and, you know, select a tree. I think we will propose a tree through our CIP pro, through our CIP budget. I, I don't know what the tree is off the top of my head, but I'm sure it's been coordinated in concept with the general plan, as well as our maintenance personnel.
So, with the change of trees, are we changing the size of the boxes? Is that what we're doing in order to prevent this in the future, overgrown?
I, I estimate that the boxes will be redone because of the root balls. We're going to have to remove the, you know, the tree root balls to get in there. My understanding is they're going to propose a tree with a less invasive root ball because of the street conduits, but I can't speak to the detail on the, you know, on the tree side. But we'd be happy to bring more information forward to the council as part of the, the budget workshop.
I have a question. Thank you. You said that, okay, 100,000 dollars is budgeted towards this project so far. So, in the budget process, will determine where the other 2 million will come from?
Yeah, so, we budgeted 100,000 last year, thinking we could get the project designed with 100,000. When we solicited RFPs, the cost exceeded the 100,000 that we had budgeted. So, we said, we figured we'd budget another 100,000. There's a lot of details in planning, obviously, a lot of public meetings are going to have to happen to make this project realized. So, we figured we'd, we'd tackle the design next year, and then we'd move ahead with construction the year after.
Thank you.
So, you took my question, but I, I knew what that answer is going to be. I guess the question that, since we're, we're budgeting for this now, I, I know for certain that there's going to be community questions about, can we save the trees? And so, that's going to be a question, is if we can, I assume that that's going to cost more. Are we looking at what that's going to cost as well? So, when we talk about this, we're presenting the options to the community.
We will provide as many options to the community as possible. My understanding currently from the maintenance manager is that the trees are diseased, and the roots are infected. To, to what degree, I don't know, we can employ an arborist to kind of give us some, some, you know, some meat and potatoes in the detail to provide that for the community.
I just, I want to make sure, and that, that may be, but I want to make sure that we're at least looking at it from a budgeting perspective, that if we have to shift the project to try to save some or all of these trees, we're at least thinking about that.
So, we can, we can have an adopt-a-tree drive going. But in addition, what I also would like to add, when you come back to us, I would probably like to have the option of phasing in the project instead of, I understand it may add a little money to the cost over the whole project, but we may be able to fit it in better to our capital expenditures on an annual basis. If we take a look at it and have a reasonable, take a look at what sections need it worst, and then we can kind of phase in on sections. So, that's just something to bring back to us, and have, give us an option to look at.
We'll take a look at those opportunities. And to speak to Councilmember Bane's comment, my understanding is that the tree roots have engulfed the conduit, and actually penetrated the conduit, I've seen some photos, didn't provide them in the presentation, of just the root balls engulfing the conduit and splitting the conduit. So, so, we'll, I'll bring something back in the, in the budget workshop, and we'll provide some additional detail for, for the council's benefit.
Is there a possibility that we can run the conduit outside of the tree boxes and just do a project entirely separate of the trees?
I do believe so, I, I, there's some, definitely some opportunities there. A lot of it depends on where the existing utilities are, obviously. You know, there's certain distances that need to be adhered to with regards to utility separation. There is an opportunity potentially to maybe microtunnel or install it without traditional open-cut excavation. That would be preferred, obviously, would impact, be a less impacted business. With regards to Mayor Schwartz's comment, just a quick off-the-cuff potential phasing opportunity would be to maybe do one side of the street, and then the other side of the street. So, we'll, we'll, you know, this is a very high-level concept, we'll explore some concepts, and I'll have some more information at the budget workshop.
I just want to give you two warnings, Ken. Don't mess with pit bulls, and don't mess with trees in the city of San Clemente. Don't even talk about messing with pit bulls, definitely don't mess with trees.
Duly noted.
Good luck.
Any other comments or questions?
And then, the next project is the Steed Lighting, Park Lighting Improvements. This project, believe it or not, has been in our outlay since '08, '09. It's been deferred time and time again. It was installed in the mid-'80s, again, it's a useful-life thing, high-energy use, you know, spill light all over the place, well, you know, the new lights will comply with dark skies, reduce energy costs, you know, there's the wooden poles there that are deteriorating. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of need there. One thing to, to note there, with regards to the price tag, is that years ago, when I first started, that price tag was a million dollars, about nine years ago. So, you know, the longer we wait, the longer we defer maintenance, the higher the costs are. Now, obviously, everything is rising in cost, but it's just something to be mindful of. So, we'd be proposing to, to budget 1.5 million in next year's budget, and go ahead and take care of that project in one swoop.
Okay, so, I, I didn't realize it's been, I thought we had looked at this back in the late '90s, early 2000s, we're going to put in down lighting that had state-of-the-art line so that you could literally dial it in, so you could walk the foul line and be in the dark on one side, and then light on the other side. in the dark on one side and then light on the other side. That we, I know we, we, on BP Art, where, you know, I had to chair it at the time, we looked at all that stuff real closely and all the things. So that's been, but that was never done and we just, okay.
In 2007, the, there was a limited expansion of the park or limited improvements of the park. My understanding, I came into the city at that time. My understanding was at that time, the city actually analyzed, looking at replacing at the lights, but because of budgetary constraints, they were deferred. So again, you know, we're biting off little pieces, doing the best we can for the community, deferring other components. This is a, this is a tough spot we're in. I think to, to, to speak to the councils, you know, what, what would help the staff is, you know, Lucidity doesn't just prioritize the assets all by itself. That has to be done, you know, with, 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 you know, with a human. But it's really determining that level of service that would be desired of the community. Obviously, I spoke to the bathrooms. You know, you look at the base of pier versus Boca Del Cano. There's a different level of service. And so I think as we look into the budgets into the future, we're going to have to evaluate, you know, do, are we going to extend the useful life another 10 years versus replace it for another 30? Obviously, that provides benefits. But at the same time, you know, you know, there's, there's a point of diminishing returns. And it's really hard to predict. It's like saying, telling, taking your card to your mechanic and he says, "Ah, you should do this." And your question is, "Well, how much longer do I got?" You know, you really want to know that. And, and it's really, it's really an impossible task. And, and, you know, with all these assets, this portfolio of assets that we have, we've been doing this with institutional knowledge. And that's what I'm going to segue into with Lucidity, is, you know, we're in, we're in a world of big data now. There's no way that, that, you know, that a maintenance manager or supervisor can keep all this in their head. It's just impossible. And that's the way the budget process has been done in all past instances. And it's not, it's, it's no one's fault. It's just kind of the nature of the beast. So if there's any, are there any more questions on the cap? It'll jump right into Lucidity and, and try to get you out of here in 60 seconds or less. And to that end, you can see there, you know, just take a look at, this is just kind of an interface, a couple screenshots of Lucidity. The maintenance services side, you can see it's divvied up into street maintenance, facilities maintenance, beaches and trail, landscape maintenance. And those are all the various disciplines that the general fund funds, those, that, that infrastructure. So we've divided it all into categories because the work order system is tracking the asset. It's tracking the labor on the asset. It's tracking the equipment that's being used on the asset. And what we're looking to try to achieve is we're trying to achieve a full lifecycle cost. And so we go to replace that asset. We can put that back into the system and we have a forecasting ability to say, "We know right when it's there, when we need to replace it." That's what a human brain can't do because there's hundreds of thousands of assets out there. So you can see, you know, the second tab over the assets, just look at the, you know, the signs, almost 12,000 signs. Streetlights, 31, you know, 3,129 streetlights. So a lot of assets out there. And this just kind of demonstrates real quickly how we can track performance. Now, this is just a quarterly, you know, analysis, those, those little dashboards there. And what they show is, you know, we set goals, are we achieving our goals? And when we don't achieve our goals, what it does, it provides us the opportunity to say, "Well, what was that, what were those staff members who were supposed to be doing that maintenance? What were they doing? And let's look at that." And so now we have a lot of visibility on the maintenance that we never had before. And what that'll do is that'll, that'll provide opportunities for the council to make better decisions and reallocate those funds in a better way. Any questions on that? And then just kind of the, the power of a graphical user interface. You can see, I'm not, this is, this is actually, these are water valve assets, but we can do this with any sort of asset out there. I'd say for the maintenance side, you know, you look at something like street signals. You know, this is grid by grid. This is the no stone left unturned concept. What happens is, you know, the system, you know, primes you every year to go out there to do this work. It gets recorded, it gets documented. The, the staff member that comes in five years from you has all that maintenance history. The system has all that cost information. And little by little, we're baselining all this data. And so that, that's just kind of one of these features that this grid-by-grid approach really provides us. It really provides us an opportunity to not really miss anything. Any questions on that? And then lastly, just another concept on facilities maintenance here in regards to, you know, what we're doing preventative maintenance. This just shows all of our HVAC units through all of our, our city. You can see almost 300 units out there. The, the graph to, or excuse me, the, the table on the right shows just the, the biannual preventative maintenance cycle. So this system is now priming the employees to go out there and maintain these assets. In the Negocio building currently, you know, we had a lot of problems with our HVAC system. The first floor, we're replacing about 25 of those HVAC units. You know, it's not to say that this maintenance didn't occur, but it occurred in a different way. And, you know, maybe one unit was done and the other unit was left behind. And so little by little, we're able to kind of capture every asset out there. Any questions on that? And so with that, you know, the goal is to kind of give us this, this really long history of what it's going to cost discipline by discipline. We can project that out. We can juxtapose that with the financial forecast. And then we can provide you folks as a city council, better information to make better decisions. And you could take it out as far as 100 years. So with that, staff recommends that we continue to identify infrastructure assets and the reserve resources needed to maintain and to replace those assets based on a comprehensive asset management plan that will be developed through the use and optimization of the CMMS.
Any other questions from anybody? And then I assume we have two, one more. No? We are done? Motion's done. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brian Brower, Information Technology Manager. I'm here to present to you the 2019 update to the city's information technology strategic plan. The plan was first developed in 2015 and it serves as a roadmap for the city's technology expenditures and projects. The overarching goal is to properly align technology with the goals and priorities for our departments and divisions throughout the city. We update the plan annually to adapt to financial changes for the city, technological advancements, new priorities, changing business needs, things of that nature. And so what we do each year is we go and we solicit input from the departments and divisions. And then we roll that input into the prior-year plan. And we put that together and publish it. And it serves as IT's work plan for the upcoming year. And then we bring that to council through In the past four years, since the plan's inception, we've completed 26 strategic technology projects that were identified within the plan. Those are listed out on page 88. Some recent highlights are a major network infrastructure upgrade that we completed in the last 12 months. We also did a complete overhaul on our data storage systems. In the last few months, we went live with a new utility billing, IVR and public payment portal, which has made some great improvements for our customers, for utility billing customers, whether on the telephone or on the web. And then we're also pretty busy with the city hall staff relocation. So technology elements to that project, working through the last fiscal Currently, we have a large number of projects that are funded and at some sort of state of being in process in the, in the current year. Some of these are in very early planning stages, but they are budgeted. Others are nearing completion. In fact, we have a couple of big ones that are just wrapping up over the next couple of weeks. We're going live with our new phone system this Thursday night at 5:31 PM. It's an exciting time for We have a, a new agenda and legisla, legislative management system that we're going to be implementing over the next few months. That's going to, you know, it's going to transform the way that the city clerk's office and the city as a whole produces agendas, packets and minutes. And then it's also going to be a, a major modernization of the way that we disseminate that information and the public has the ability to consume it. We also have a major upgrade for our permitting and licensing software system, the Trackett system. We're also planning on doing a complete overhaul of the audiovisual equipment and the TV production equipment here for the council chambers and, and the room on the other side of the wall there, where we push it out to, out to the public over our, our broadcast mechanisms. Excuse me. In the coming months, we have a third-party security audit planned for our IT systems. And we also have some improvements planned for our, our disaster recovery systems that we have for remote disaster recovery. And then finally, we, we have, we, we plan to bring up the Lucidity public portal and make that available to, to our community. And what that is, you just saw Ken's presentation about the Lucidity computerized maintenance management system. Well, there's a public portal element to that that we haven't gone live with to date. We plan on going live within the next year on that. And that's going to be essentially a public request system. So if somebody has an issue with a pothole or graffiti or, or whatever the complaint or issue is that they want to report, they'll do it directly via the web into that system. It goes straight into their, into their workflow. So we're, we're well aware of the fact that those projects are going to extend into the upcoming fiscal year. We also have a couple of new projects and then a few other ongoing initiatives that are outlined in the plan. And if you, if you want to look at the, that list, it's on page 92. There's some details in attachment A for each of these items. The, the two projects involve a study and assessment of our electronic document management system. And then we're also looking at some improvements to our, our, our video system here at the city. Some, some preventative maintenance, some new cameras, and also some, some replacements of old cameras for the system. So in addition to that, attachment B on page 95, you can see a five-year budgeting matrix of anticipated projects. Anything that's listed under the current year, you can see items that are budgeted in the current year. There's also some projects, if you go back a couple of slides, that were budgeted in previous years that are not on that list, but they're still underway. They're, they're carryover projects. And then i, if you look in the outline years on that table, there's, there's some pie in the sky type things or just some things that we know that someday, we're going to have to cross that bridge. We're going to have to deal with it. We know that someday, we're probably going to want to consider automatic meter reading in this town. We're not there yet. Our meters are good right now. And so there's, there's some, those distant items there are not necessarily things we plan to fund in that year. But then things as they get closer to the current timeframe, those are the more viable projects that we're considering. With that, these, these new projects for the, the upcoming fiscal year, our intent is to bring those forth through the, the budget process in the upcoming months, bring them forward as decision packages through the annual budget process. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Real quick, the audiovisual for here, I think we had a discussion of why should we do it? Because we might be moving eventually. But I think what you said is anything that we put in now, we can take it somewhere else.
That's the intent. There's a few exceptions. Like if we did cabling out to the audio equipment here, back into the room there, that, that would be a difficult thing to relocate. I think it'd be a small percentage of the total cost. Our, our main concern is the equipment in that room right there that pulls the whole show together.
If we move, it can, it can go.
That's correct.
Okay. That was the one thing I was worried about. So that covers the city. Do, what do we do with vendors to upgrade, upgrade the systems for the people in our city? I mean, this might not be the time to do it, but like AT&amp;T and all the major vendors, who stays on top of that? Is that your department?
We, as far as the services they're providing to the public, that's not something that IT's really involved with, no.
Who, who is that?
The services that AT&amp;T provides or Cox Cable, those are all governed by the CPUC. And the city has very little say over those products. And, and, and who can come into the city and offer those services?
So it'd be up to like one of us to contact a certain vendor if we feel they're not up to speed with the rest of them?
Yeah, you know, we, we get complaints about, you know, Cox Cable being so expensive and, and what are the options? You know, AT&amp;T has been trying to put fiber into different parts of the town, but it's limited by the infrastructure they have. I know that some of the newer parts of town, like Talega, has AT&amp;T fiber. So they have, in, in Talega, you have the choice between Uverse System or Cox. And so there's a little bit more competitive opportunity in Talega or some of the, the reserve, those sorts of areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just to confirm, the city, because at one time, we franchised out for cable provider or something, didn't we? Like our, we are, like our trash provider.
My understanding is, you know, those cable franchises came into play a long time ago. And the cities really don't have an option in, in taking them out and going out to see if there's new providers that can come in. Because they've put in all, the, the expectation is they've put in the, the infrastructure and the cost of doing that. It's a, it's a laborious, costly enterprise. So it's hard to take it away from them.
Yeah, but I would have, I, for some reason, and, and I made a stupid thing and I assumed, is that there would be some underlying or overlying agreement. Yes, we're going to give you the franchise on it because you're going to pay for all the infrastructure to go in, but we're going to have certain levels of, of service expected and so on and so forth. I just wondered if we had that or, or, or at the whim of the PUC.
We have that with Cox. We have a franchise agreement with Cox Communications with the city. They've been the only cable company. They, they tore up the, the streets and laid the cable. And so they have the franchise agreement. Another provider for cable could make a proposal to the city to do the same, but they don't. It's a lot of effort. The city would have to approve that.
We know that AT&amp;T ran cable out in Talega area.
It's fiber optics. Uverse is fiber optics. And half, half of Talega has, has Uverse, but half does not. The old side is called, does not, as an option.
I'll look into the franchise agreement with Cox and see what it says about the time period and if there's any renewal or extension. And I'll get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question on the, the video system. Do those cameras, I know there's a system that has like speakers on it, so there can be actual communications, not necessarily two-way, but one direction. Is that included in this or has the city looked at that at all?
It's interesting. I, I just learned of that recently. And we actually do, the, we have a video management system. And, and that company's video management system has that capability. And they're a popular choice among other cities. There's a few big players in the market and we use one of them. I'm not sure if the version we have has the two, the, the audio, but we're actually looking into that right now.
Hey, yeah, I'd be interested to know, just to make sure we're, we're budgeting for that possibility. Because I've talked to a bunch of the deputies and they've mentioned that it's been helpful in other cities. So if we're, we're looking at that as a potential project, it'd be nice to, to look at that as an option.
Understood.
May I have one question? I would, I would love to see, and perhaps this is for the budget workshop, but I would love to see us look at software system for public records requests. A couple of meetings ago, Mr. Sund had indicated that is our most expensive public records request is for emails. And there's some software up, out there. I've actually started researching that could really help us do that more efficiently and save us some costs as well. Thank you. Oh, and good job. Your, your department does an amazing job with a small staff. These projects are extremely impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a great team.
Eric, can you remind me, because I'm not remembering it, on our public records request, didn't we streamline and go to an online system last year?
Currently, do you want to give a little overview on for you?
Sure. We have, we have a, a web-based portal where the public can make a public records request. And then that system manages the request process. It's not used to harvest information or filter information, but it's used to receive the request and then track the workflow of the request through city staff and wherever else it goes. And then it's actually used to deliver the results back out in PDF format to, to the requester. requester.
So Councilmember Ferguson, what you're talking about would be a system that doesn't need any staff? It would just do that on its own?
It's an automated system. I'm just starting to research some this weekend, and I plan to look into them further, especially with regards to the costs. But it does efficiently capture the emails and really helps reduce costs, staff time, and also missing any records for potential lawsuits. So there's some testimonials out there from some cities that use these various systems, but happy to put a little memo together for the council in the near future, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be great, because, now, we have all our emails are, there's a, we have an email server somewhere, right?
Yes. Well, our email actually resides out in the cloud at Microsoft Online Office 365.
Okay, so it's, it's on the cloud, but we could tie our access to that to maybe a software that could then do the searching, as she's mentioning, as, as, as she's mentioning that they could set the manual searching that we're now doing in a lot of areas, so...
Yeah, there's, there's a centralized search tool that's built into the system, but I'd love to know more about the, this opportunity.
Yeah, I would love to, while you're doing the research, why don't you find out if it's something that we could then use to access our individual emails, or said some idiot sent us something on city business and it ended up on our personal email? You know, we can go and find it without having to dig it for hours or days, but okay, right. Anything else?
Thank you, Brett.
No, yes, real quickly, just... So what I'm hearing though is, as part of the budgeting process, we want to look at these projects so we can prioritize them, right? That's the idea, is to get that done, so, just want to make sure it's not a pie-in-the-sky thing, because I think there's a lot of savings that we could have from Public Records Act requests if we, if we get working on some of that.
Just to clarify and to make sure, so, you know, right now, what you see in the Information Technology Strategic Plan kind of is the similar six-year forecast as it relates to CIPs. So what I'm hearing is, is would the council, does the council want us to come back as part of the budget process with a decision package to either have a price tag associated to some type of software program? I know Lake Forest, and Scott, I think you might know what I'm talking about, Lake Forest looked at this specific software as well as part of their Sunshine Ordinance deliberations. For Lake Forest, the cost was prohibitive and they didn't move forward, but I'm a little bit familiar with the software, where you as the end user have to code every document that you create to identify it and index it so that it's, you know, it's either a privileged email, or it's a, you know, open email, or a document and so forth. Is that something that the council's looking for? Because I'd like to get a little bit more direction if, if we're going to bring something back as part of the budget.
Sure, yeah, and I, I think, I think Irvine uses a system like this as well, I, don't quote me on that, but I think they do, and there's several other cities that I know have done them. As part of my practice, I've run into them, and it's been efficient. But yes, I think for me, it'd be nice to look at that with a decision packet. What did you say that our Public Records Act request is costing us a year currently?
Right now, well, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's probably upwards of about a little over a hundred and fifty thousand a year right now with regards to that, using BBK as it relates to privileged documents and going through that.
Because I guess my, my understanding, and, you know, right now, we have to go through and search emails for attorney-client privilege and other privileged, process. Those emails are pretty easy to code, if we know that an, an email is going to be attorney-client privilege, city attorney's settings, and you can code those right away and vice versa. So I think it's, at least for me, I'd like to look into it and see if it's something that's workable, because it could over the, it's probably going to be painful for their first year or two as we get used to it, but I think after a while, it's going to be long-term a cost savings item, so.
My only concern is, you mentioned that it was prohibitive for Lake Forest. I, I think what, where I was leaning was, Councilmember Ferguson's looking at it, you can look at it to see what exactly it is, and then maybe start to talk to us or send us a white paper or something on it, because I'm concerned with, this is late in the game to be throwing it in to the budget with all the other projects you have. That's, that's my concern. I'd like to more find out what it is and what it costs, and, and how it actually works, because if it relies on a human coding and all of us coding whether something's privileged or not, I'm concerned about that. I want to know how, how it works, but the cost is mainly the biggest part I want to know before we say, yes, we want it to be a decision package.
Yeah, what I, I heard and what I was leaping to, and then it got changed during the talk, was some way to cut back the current costs we are incurring to do the searches. This sounds like it's a way to minimize future costs for future emails, but not, but we would still have to manually do everything that we already have in the, you know, in, in our, in the cloud. And so that's, that's different than my thinking. So if there aren't any systems that we can actually cut costs now, then I would like, as you were saying, okay, what systems are there, what would it cost us to put them in play, and what we would have to do, so that we can kind of, it's an informational package for now.
So just to clarify, I think it would be for both. I think it would be for, for emails that we have in our email now.
I'm not going to assume.
Yeah, and emails going forward, I, I can tell you that's what it is, because I've got experience of them.
So we'd have to code all our current emails?
Somebody would have to code them, somebody, and that's part of the process. I mean, I deal with this type of technology every day, where you search a name, Scott Smith, okay, everything with Scott Smith could be potentially privileged, it's coded, that's easy. I mean, you just go down the list and you code it. So I think it's worth at least looking at as part of this process. This is the first budget hearing that I've been a part of, so I think it's as early as we could possibly get. So if we could look at that now, then, great. If it makes sense in the budget, then we say no, and if it does, then we can, can approve it later on.
Again, but I think we're just going to talk about informational information, you know, get us some informational packet on it now, what's available, what we think is going to be, don't set it up to be an actual budget item for now, I want to know more information before we...
So it would be, it would go into our long-term financial planning, but it's something we consider now?
Yeah.
Okay, depending on the cost, yeah, okay.
Great, so I'll put together the, I'll put together a memo on that with some information.
Got it? Okay.
We do have a recommendation for you.
Accept the Information Technology Strategic Plan update and direct staff to bring the recommended fiscal year 2019-20 projects and initiatives forward through the budget process.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we have motion by...
Ferguson.
By Councilmember Ferguson, and second by Councilmember Bain. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous.
All right, we kept the two fun ones till the end, so, I'll, I'll cover very briefly. There are no recommendations made as part of the financial policies. What, the only recommendation is really coming out of the pension update, so we're just, there's no recommendations part of that, but the recommendation is coming out of pension update, just to cover that. So just to give you a pension update, the different pension plans that we have, obviously we have CalPERS administering three pension plans, and then we have Empower, which is the CSER Plan, the City of San Clemente Employee Retirement Plan. And the CalPERS Plan, what's covered through that is the Safety Lifeguard Plan, the Safety, the Inactives, and again, that was the past fire and police, and then the miscellaneous employees, and again, those were for the employees working for the city at the time of transition over to CalPERS. And then we also have the Empower or CSER Plan, and that's for the miscellaneous employees who did not transition over to CalPERS. So that's kind of a, a brief summary, just to kind of go through past actions that we've taken related to pensions. Again, I don't believe any of you were around in 2009, 10, but we did a one-time pay down of 4.6 million, and that was on the Safety Inactive Plan. In 1314, we did a one-time payment of 225,716, and that was on the Safety Lifeguard Plan. In 1516, we did a one-time payment of a half a million dollars, and that was the Safety Lifeguard Plan. And in 1617 and subsequent years, we've basically been utilizing supplemental payments using the early payment discount. So with CalPERS, if you make a payment at the beginning of the year, let's say the payment's 1.3 million, they'll give you a discount because you're paying it so early in the year, so they'll say, all you have to do is pay 1.2 million. So we've been taking that $100,000 worth of savings and coming back later in the year, making sure that we do have that budget savings, and say, all right, we'd like to make an additional one-time payment of $100,000, and that keeps our costs down going into the future, and we're current, we, we use those budgetary savings to achieve those long-term savings. Overall, the, the current status of the pensions, you can see I kind of highlighted them there, and the chart is in the pension paper. You can see the Marine Safety Plan, it's the smallest plan, but it is the highest funded. You may recall from the other slide, most of the one-time payments of 400 and 225,000 have been towards that plan. The Safety Inactive Plan, again, there's no more active employees, it's the past fire and police. The unfunded liability is being amortized over a set timeframe. So this one is a little bit more, you have a mortgage, you've got 16 years left to pay on it, CalPERS has said, all right, based on life expectancy and all that kind of stuff, we're not going to give you 30 years of a rolling average or anything like that, and you've got 30 plus 30 plus 30 to pay this liability down. They basically set a timeframe, you have to have it paid off in that timeframe, and that would be occurring in fiscal year 2035 and 2036. Again, that's probably where I'll say we'll experience the largest variances, because as assumptions change or actual results vary, that's where we could get a blip on the radar. Again, it's got to be paid off by a set timeframe. So if, let's say we have low investment earnings, the payment would go up. If we have high investment earnings, the payment would go down, so that's where we could have a little bit of fluctuation as far as that. Miscellaneous Plan, again, this is for all the city funds and all current miscellaneous employees as they're categorized. You can see that it's the largest payroll from a dollar factor, and it affects all the city's funds in the city. So let's say the water fund, the sewer fund, the general fund, it affects all funds, whereas the first two, Marine Safety is general fund, the Safety Inactives, again, police and fires paid from the general fund, so those are just general fund-specific. The CSER Plan, again, that's past city employees and the CASA employees. So again, that's all funds, including CASA funds. So we have a liability, and that's being allocated, that annual payment, much like the police-fire, except it's being allocated to all the different funds of the city, including CASA. And you can see the estimated 1920 cost, again, that's for the funds that it affects is off to the right-hand side. In total, you can see we have a funding percentage of about 70.5. I would say, in a total perspective, most plans in California are probably in the 70% to 80% range in total. Some may be in the 65. I'll say 65 to 75, probably be a little bit more accurate.
Chris?
Yeah. Jake, just to for clarity, and sorry to put you on the spot, but for the CASA employees, is that representative only of our portion, because we do share that cost with Dana Point, or is that total liabilities?
This is total.
So, so a portion of that is going to be bare by, or by the City of Dana Point, correct?
Based on the financial statements for CASA last year, I believe it was about a million, so you see how it says the unfunded amount of 15 million? A million of that would be related to CASA, and from that, it'd be prorated out to the City of San Clemente and Dana Point.
Thanks.
I know a lot of information, I tried to keep it from going a little bit too heavy or that type of stuff.
It's a great slide, I like this slide.
Any other questions from anybody? It worked real well.
All right. So moving on, again, this is kind of the recommendations, and I'll cover a little bit of the recommendations. One of the big things in municipal government is we've been moving towards financial policies to deal with pensions, and it's been a big topic of conversation at multiple, I'll call it Society of, or CSMFO, California Society of Municipal Finance Officers, and in the industry. So one of the points is to try to get some policies on the books. Again, you can look through our fiscal policies, and there's absolutely nothing related just strictly to pensions. So this is, I'll call it, a first step in that process. The first one is the required actuarial contributions shall be made to cover the current service costs and unfunded liabilities based on the actuarial determined contribution rate. I know there's some big words in there, but basically, we're doing that right now, we're making the payments as required. This is just kind of solidifying what we are doing. So I don't want to say it's, it's good to do this from, I'll call it, a transparency perspective, and I'll even say from a rating agency standpoint, they like to see that you're addressing and that you've made that commitment. So the first one kind of goes into that a little bit more. The second one, annually review the city's pension plans, funding levels of and identify assets or areas where funding may be utilized to target a funding ratio of 90% or higher for each of the city's individual pension plans. Now, you might be saying, why 90%? Why not 100%? Again, we're, we're just, you know, we're funded at 70.5 among all the different plans, and we've got four different plans. So if you fund one at 100%, and let's say we have a good investment year, all of a sudden, that plan is funded at 110%, and all the other plans are still around the 60 or 65%. So that can create a little bit of, I'll call it, one plan having overfunding, and then those assets are all tied into that plan, you can't move assets around, oh, I'm moving it from the firefighters and the police over to the current employees. CalPERS doesn't allow that kind of movement, so you're kind of tied in once that plan is overfunded. And generally, in the industry, 90% is considered a strong funding of a pension plan. So this is kind of just, again, trying to say, set a benchmark and trying to achieve that benchmark, and we'd be taking steps over the budget process in the future, trying to achieve that 90%. And maybe once that's, and again, this goes a little bit more into the paper, there are other future considerations, maybe once we achieve 90%, there's been talk about Section 115 plans, and that's where basically you pre-fund pensions, and that would be more under, I'll call it, the city's control. You could use those to, let's say we have off year in one plan, or the mortality rate changes in one plan more for, than the other plan, you could use those funds then to do it, or allocate those funds towards a plan where there is more of a need, and you're no longer at the 90%. So again, we're just trying to set some fiscal policies, just to provide clarity on what we're trying to achieve within the city. So, and these can be changed in the future. Again, we're not, let's say we do get 100%, we could say, change that 90 to 100% later or something like that, we're just setting the benchmark, so. So with that, I'll go on to the next one. The next ones are primarily about transparency, and we kind of covered briefly in the trends, all the different trends that are in there, and they're in the long-term financial plan. It'd basically be adding something, because essentially that's a debt, and there's one trend related to debt, and it would give council an opportunity to kind of see where we are going on a funding standpoint. Okay, are we going from the 70.5% to 80% or 75, 70.5 to 75, or are we going the opposite direction? So again, it's just to provide a little bit of transparency and information to council, and I'll call it the end user, the citizens. So we'd also like to incorporate a pension summary page into the city budget, again, just kind of saying almost like a little bit of the chart that we have, what the funding costs are, what are the contributions that are being made, just kind of the different pension plans that the city has. So it's primarily informational in nature, and that'd probably be in the staffing section of the city budget.
Any questions?
Oh, I got one more. So, and then, again, kind of going to our one-time payments, it's to direct staff to pursue those options as identified in the Pension Analysis Issue Paper, to pay down unfunded liabilities for the pension plans, to meet the target 90% funding level by plan, and authorize a one-time general fund contribution for general fund unassigned fund balance. and authorize a one-time General Fund contribution for General Fund unassigned fund balance to the Marine Safety Plan in the amount of 400,000 to reach a 90% funding level in this plan. So again, this kind of, I'll call it a two-step process. The first is recognizing that we are taking those steps and we're moving forward, trying to fund at that 90% level. The second is, we'll come back as part of the budget process and propose a one-time contribution of 400,000. And that would be to the Lifeguard Plan. And that would provide savings for the operating position going into the future. So let's say that 400,000, depending on how we allocate, it could offer savings of, we'll say 10,000 to 35,000 annually, going into the future, year after year after year after year after year. So that would basically bolster our operating position into the future. And again, it would be a one-time contribution. We'd basically take, I'll call it, some of that 6.3 unassigned fund balance, but we'd be saving it over the long term and it would be helping the operating position in the future and fund balance in the out-years.
Now, with that being said, are there any other questions from the council? Would someone like to read this 10,000-word summary of what our recommendations are?
Yeah, I'll read the recommendations. I just have requests that we vote on them, line item by line item, as opposed to doing one large one. Okay. So first, I move that, in order to strengthen and promote the long-term financial stability of the City of San Clemente related to pensions, staff recommendations that a pension fiscal policy be added to the city's fiscal policy, the policies added would state the following. First one I'm asking to vote on is, the required actuarial contribution shall be made to cover the current service costs and unfunded liabilities based on the actuarially determined contribution rate.
That's a motion, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hamm, second by Councilmember Bain. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous.
I move that we annually review the city pension plans, funding level of, and identify areas where funding may be utilized to target a funding ratio of 90% or higher for each of the city's individual pension plans.
Do I? I have a motion by Councilmember Hamm and a second by Councilmember Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
No, I'm opposing that one, that's why I wanted to be.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
So we have four, four in favor, Councilmember Hamm opposed.
But he made the motion?
He made the motion and then he opposed it. He can do that.
Okay. Two, incorporate a pension trend indicator into the long-term financial plan in 2020, trend section.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hamm, a second by Councilmember Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Unanimous.
I'll read three and four together. Three, incorporate a pension summary page into the city budget. Four, direct staff pursue options identified in the Pension Analysis Issue Paper to pay down unfunded liabilities for the pension plans to meet the target 90% funding level by plan and authorize a one-time General Fund contribution from General Fund unassigned fund balance to the Marine Safety Plan in an amount of up to $400,000 to reach a 90% funding level in this plan.
Motion by, do I have a second? Motion by Hamm, second by Bain. All in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed? Thank you.
Alright, we've reached the last leg of the LTFP race. So good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council, Mike Johnston, Management Analyst with the City Manager's Office. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you this evening and talk about the city's public safety services. I just want to note before I get started that there's not going to be a recommendation before you this evening, but in the spirit of transparency and due to the fact that public safety is such an important issue for our community, we as staff thought it would be prudent to come before you and share an overview of public safety services and talk about some of the challenges that we'll be facing in the years to come. So with that, I'll go ahead and jump in. So public safety budget, public safety as a whole makes up 46.6% of the General Fund operating budget. That number alone really just highlights that it's imperative that we take a look at our public safety costs and really review and analyze them. And these costs are expected to rise over the next few years. So specifically, taking a look at police services, we did receive first estimates from OCSD and those first estimates for the next fiscal year come out to 15,896,144. And that represents a 2.67% increase over last year. And as was mentioned earlier by the Assistant City Manager, typically when we're forecasting and we're looking towards the future, we like to anticipate kind of a 4% increase in costs. So when you compare that 2.67% to the 4%, that might look pretty, pretty good, but actually, there are MOUs that are expiring in June. And so in our discussions with OCSD, it's anticipated that those new MOUs will be approved and adopted in the fall of 2019. And that will result most likely in cost increases to our contract. And so instead of scrambling to find funds to cover those costs mid-year, we've decided to be proactive and include a budget line item for an additional $150,000 in this year's budget to be able to cover some of those unanticipated costs that will be coming down the line. So that's the approach that we've taken for the increases in the police services contract. And another challenge that we're kind of facing in addition to the contract is police vacancies. Now, between FY '17 and '18 and FY '18 and '19 through November, November's the most recent month that we actually have data for, the city's experienced 11,250 hours of vacancies. And it's important to note that these numbers aren't purely just a vacant position, but a lot of times vacancies happen due to a worker's comp issue, or family medical leave, or military leave, or oftentimes officers can go on special assignment. And so that results in vacancies. And so vacancies are something that we'll want to pay attention to as we look towards the future. And then, as was mentioned by the Assistant City Manager previously, to date, we've only filled one of the deputy positions of the two that we added in the last fiscal year. And so a lot of these vacancies are filled with overtime and the level of service stays relatively the same. But as we look towards the future, we want to be mindful of the challenges that we're facing due to attrition and the tightening and increasingly competitive labor market that's out there. So now, as we move on to fire services, we've received a first estimate for the next fiscal year at $9,372,674. And that represents a 7.63% increase, pretty substantial. But when you look at the number, it's really ramped up by the fact that we're taking on that fourth firefighter as a part of the phase-in to cover those costs. So in this fiscal year, it's going to be $186,790. And those costs will go up over the next few years, ultimately culminating in a cost of $778,980 in the fiscal year 2425. I just want to make a special note that these numbers were provided to us by OCFA in 2017 and that their MOU is expected to expire in 2020. And it expected, new MOU is expected to be adopted and be incorporated as a part of our 2021 budget. And so as a part of that budget, we'll expect to see those numbers change based on what happens with the MOU. So we could even see these costs go up even further. So now that I've talked about Police and Fire, which make up the core of our public safety services here in the city, I wanted to take a little time to also discuss some of the departments, divisions, and programs that help ensure the overall safety and well-being and augment some of the other Police and Fire Public Safety Services. So when you, when you think about public safety, it's so much more than our firefighters and our police officers. These men and women do a fantastic job on a daily basis, but we can only afford certain level of services due to budget constraints. And so this is kind of where this public safety continuum comes into play. I didn't create this term, it was actually coined by another municipality. But I think it does a great job to kind of capture the effort that the city council has made in the last few years. And so the public safety continuum is where Police and Fire Services are augmented with the work of several other city departments and services, all contributing to make San Clemente, San Clemente a better place, a better and safer city. The public safety continuum is a holistic approach that involves our beaches, parks, and recreation department, great programs like our retired senior volunteer program, divisions like our code enforcement, and divisions like our Marine Safety. So with that said, I'll kind of spend some time just talking briefly about each of those. First off, code enforcement. In previous budget cycles, the city council has chosen to invest in additional FTEs or officers, code enforcement officers, to assist with weekend enforcement and also to help with specific issues as it relates to our sober living ordinance and the STLU ordinance. And they've done a fantastic job in enforcing those and then recently assisting us as it relates to the city's ordinances and the homeless population and all of those issues. So our code enforcement division goes a long way towards benefiting and augmenting the service provided by OCSD. Marine Safety is another fantastic division that protects our city's four miles of beaches. And as you all know, we're a pretty big tourist town during the summer months, and so with the influx of population, the Marine Safety Division does a great job of protecting all of those visitors to our coastline. And they also have the ability to enforce the city's policies and ordinances on the beaches. For example, if there's a dog off-leash that's running around that shouldn't be off-leash, they have the ability to kind of enforce those ordinances and laws. Next up, our retired senior volunteer program. This is a fantastic program made up of 24 volunteer men and women, provides support services as it relates to parking enforcement, crowd control, vacation home checks, and a whole host of other support services. And they do a really great job in augmenting, again, what OCSD is able to do in providing public safety. Beaches, Parks, Rec, Parks and Rec also has their park rangers, and the park rangers are kind of the eyes and ears in the parks. And they are able to kind of go around, patrol, handle any issues that come up in the parks. They're able to check on, check on all of the restrooms, close them down at the end of the night, and report any issues to OCSD should they arise. And moving towards the future, we're looking at possibly giving them administration citation abilities so that they can enforce parking laws or other such laws that end up getting violated in our parks that would fall under their purview. So this next slide kind of underscores the importance of these, these departments playing contributing to the overall quality of life in the city. So in the last fiscal year, we had just over 1,600 swim rescues that were performed by our Marine Safety Division. We had 2,600 code compliance complaints processed by our code compliance division. And we had 36,000 activities conducted by our RSVP program. Now, this includes everything they've done, citations, talking to residents, home visits, special event support, everything that happens during the year. That added up to 36,000 activities. So with that said, we're definitely facing an uphill battle and a challenge with our increased costs in public safety services. But as a staff, we're confident that, working together with, with the council and all of our departments, that as we continue to look towards efficiencies and improving and looking at new ways of providing improved public service, that we can address those challenges head-on and really provide a safer, better San Clemente for everyone. So that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Great. And before I go to other councilmembers, I'd just like to pass on, at a recent OCFA board meeting, I had one of, another mayor from another city down here come up and lament to me how they've observed our RSVP unit and what they do for the city. And he was, said that, damn, he wished he had that at his city, because it accomplishes so much and saves the city so much. So I just wanted to pass that on, that I've got, we've got some jealous cities out there looking at RSVP program.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, I just want to comment. Great job by staff on this report specifically. This is something that I asked for four years ago and never in my mind had envisioned that it would grow to what it has today. Previously, when I, when I first got elected, we were looking at public safety just as Police and Fire. And as you outlined tonight, there's so much more to it than just those two aspects. And so thank you for doing this and bringing light to what everybody in our community does in terms of public safety. So I appreciate it, it gives us a really good, in-depth perspective.
Anything else?
I have a question. The 46.6% that you noted earlier that encompasses our public safety, are you counting these continuum services such as code compliance and CASA? Because in the budget, it's conflicting, the CASA, for instance, Coastal Animal Services Authority is a joint powers authority, right? So it really is its own budget. And same with the code compliance, the umbrella entity is Community Development Services, which funds that position. So it's a little bit skewed, in my opinion, that it's 46.6% when really, it's not, when they're being funded by separate departments, so to speak, in the JPA. So if we extract those, you know, our public safety costs in terms of Police and Fire and Marine Safety, which is, you know, the main priority of public safety, actually comes down significantly. Well, $2 million, about $2 million.
I think, I think we show CASA as part of it because it's something that is going to be difficult to reduce from a, from a budget standpoint, it's something that we need to keep going. And there isn't a real opportunity to, to reduce that budget. And then, when it comes to code enforcement, we've used code enforcement the past couple years and kind of increased, increased their presence, as Michael mentioned, as part of the STLU front. On the STLU front, when it came to sober living homes and with vacation rentals. And this was something that the public asked for more oversight on these, on these things. And so we increased our, our code enforcement efforts to kind of augment what we're doing with the Sheriff's Department, because we were getting a lot of requests for the Sheriff's Department to go out and handle issues with sober living homes and vacation rentals. And we found that we could do it better with code enforcement officers. So that's why code enforcement is showed, is how it, how it's working with our public safety.
I see that in the partnerships and the continuum. But if you look at other cities, for instance, about half their budget is public safety, but they don't have these other entities. They don't have the animal shelter, the RSVP, they don't include these things, and their budget's 50%. So my point is, this shines a light on how underfunded we are when it comes to our deputies. And including all these, it props it up as if it's a lot more. So that's my point.
And I think, I mean, and you raise a good point, Councilmember Ferguson, I think the 46% represents the General Fund dollars being funded for all of those public safety activities, be it Fire, be it Police, be it CASA, they're all funded by General Fund dollars. And going back to Councilmember Hamm's comment, there was direction to present that holistic dollar amount that, all dollars that are going towards public safety. I know in our papers, we do indicate, you know, public safety, specifically OCSD is about 26% if my memory serves me correct.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent of our General Fund budget. And OCFA is, how much percentage of our?
Almost 16%.
Almost 16. So I think, you know, we do, we can definitely be better about clarifying the percentages for each of those services, but cumulatively, those General Fund dollars are basically dedicated to a facet of public safety.
Laura, one of the things I found, I used to think that way, I found that we can't really compare ourselves to other city on percentages, because cities like, say Laguna Woods, they have so little commercial property and their entities in their city, they're there at like 50% or 60% and they're worried that it's going to envelop their whole entire budget. We, we can't do it that way because we have more revenue than some other cities do. So we can't say, well, they're spending 50%. They're spending 50% because they have less revenue than, than we do. So we can't compare them that way. The one thing that I wanted to ask on public safety, because you said, you mentioned that vacancies are such an issue, is I'd like to know, understand a little bit more about how the CSOs work and what they do, if they're all there, what they're doing for us. Because I'm not quite sure how that works. And I'd like to know what, which deputies are on a special assignment and what we're getting for that, what team they're on. Not publicly, because I understand we, we shouldn't be talking about. publicly, because I understand we, we shouldn't be talking about that, and who's, who's out right now, and why they're out. And then also, the crime prevention specialist, I'm kind of curious why we can't have, if we don't currently have one and you can't get one hired, if we have an entity, a group of people that want to start a neighborhood watch, why the sheriff is not giving us or providing a CSO from another city? It seems pretty easy to jump in and talk to a neighborhood about doing something like that, and it doesn't seem like we're getting from, from the sheriff's office somebody to come in and help us a little bit when, when someone's out. That's, that's what it seems like to me, because the neighborhood watch should be a fairly easy thing to do. And I'm also wondering if, under our, because we have upstaffed our code enforcement so much, why, because they're dealing with, it's complaints, but it's quality of life issues, and that's mainly what we're dealing with, why can't code enforcement sometimes help a little bit with this prevention and things like that, or does it have to be a sheriff's officer to do that?
Well, the, the crime prevention specialist position, it was full-time, and we reduced it to part-time at the request of the sheriff's department, at the, at the request of Chief Peters. That person ended up going on maternity leave and then didn't return, the position was left at part-time, and it's been difficult to fill. Eric and I have talked about changing the budgeting back to a full-time position to help out with recruitment. I think the crime prevention specialist is a totally different position than a CSO, and as far as the sheriff's department is concerned, they would have a hard time, you know, interchanging those two positions. Right now, our, our CSOs, we have four CSOs.
We have, we have two vacancies currently.
And we have two, two vacancies, and they help out with crime reporting, traffic collisions, accident reporting, and they do parking enforcement. We know that that's an issue with parking enforcement, we've talked about staffing up those positions, I've even talked to Chief Peters about potentially adding a fifth CSO that we could say, this person just does parking, and see if that, you know, increases our, because right now, one of the persons is being used for administrative work instead of being out there doing parking and, and doing that revenue generation, so it's kind of, kind of a lost opportunity there. As far as using code enforcement for crime prevention, it's an interesting idea, but I think in general, the public wants to deal with the sheriff's department. And, and having a code enforcement officer might sound like a good way to, to share some, some efforts. I think, at the end of the day, the public wants to have, wants to touch that part of Orange County Sheriff's Department to help them feel like they're getting that service in their, in their portion of the community and their, in their neighborhood. So, Chief Peters has mentioned that, you know, he's willing to step out and help with those sorts of neighborhood watch efforts, but, you know, he's leaving at the end of the week, so.
Right, so that, better schedule him quick.
Yeah.
Before he goes. So, I am concerned still, again, about the vacancies, it seems like we talk about that every year. If we are truly experiencing quality of life crime in this city, and those are issues, we have to step up, and we've got to get our neighborhood watch going, because it's prevention, 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 that's what we keep hearing, of stopping these crimes. And I'm, I am concerned, because I think some of our officers are on a special team, I'm not sure we're getting any more benefit from, from that, but I, I don't know if any of the other council feels that way, I just feel like we need, we separately need to understand why these officers are not there, in order to try to figure out what we need to do. We're being asked to budget, but we just need to understand what's, what's truly happening. And it seems to me, that's why I mentioned the CSO officers, it seems like that's an issue. I, I didn't realize two were out, and those people do a lot of work, and if they're not there, the offices are then rip, going to accidents and things like that.
Yeah, I think that would be a good topic to, for us to discuss with the, the new chief of police.
You might be right. I'm just voicing, that's my.
After this, after this coming week.
That's my concerns, and I think I'd like to understand it a little better of what's going on.
And if I may, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to respond to you, Kathy, on the special teams that our deputies are members of. One for sure, we're getting a lot of use out of, I can say unequivocally, because I work side-by-side with them, and they're doing a lot of good work. There's a couple other smaller teams that we have certain individuals a part of, and I can't speak to that, but the one that's taken most of our deputies is doing a lot of good work.
Great, so I'll just jump in, I was trying to look for opportunities, and Kathy thinks she touched on a few of the things that I was wondering about. I know we're doing some of our parking enforcement with the RSVPs, I think last time I checked, it was like one day per week for a couple of hours, that's what I was told. And then we have our CSOs that are covering other parking enforcement, and I'm just wondering if a better use of deputy time, or at least our resources, since two of those, those vacancies that aren't filled, is looking at private enforcement options. So, and I, I know that that's a topic, but I'm trying to be creative here so that we can free up our, our actual police services budget towards getting deputies out there, which I know the community wants, in terms of crime prevention specialists and otherwise. Is there any creative con, do you want to have him answer that first, James?
I'll have Eric answer that, because we did look at privatizing parking enforcement.
So, we did meet with a provider that provides private parking enforcement for all of the state beaches and parks, as well as other agencies. It's something that is feasible, however, from a, from a revenue and cost standpoint, it did not make sense financially. It was going to cost a significant amount of money on an annual basis, and the revenue stream really didn't produce a return on that investment, no different than where we're at today with what we have in for, in front of us now with our revenue streams. And so, from a financial standpoint, it didn't make sense, that doesn't mean it can't be looked at again, but when we, we actually, actually got a proposal from them and went through the numbers and did a financial analysis, and it just didn't make sense to do so. The park rangers are something that I've been very kind of passionate about, they'll have citation ability, they'll be able to write parking tickets in the parks. I kind of want to do baby steps with them, we've grown exponentially with our park ranger recruitment program. Ironically, we've received a lot of ex-state park rangers and retired law enforcement that are now working for us in the park monitor program, or I should say park monitor, park ranger program. And so that, that's something that we're really trying to facilitate, and we're hoping within the next couple of months, we'll have that citation ability available with them. They have to go through a post-program to be able to write citations, we've already ordered the parking tickets, but in my mind, if, if there was any potential solution, it might be looking at expanding that part-time base to provide more consistent parking enforcement throughout the city, not just in our parks.
Okay, and that's, that's what I'd be interested in, because the parks are great, but that's, that's not.
Correct.
Where most of our parking issues are.
Pure bowl, T Street, et cetera.
We've got all sorts of parking issues, so if we can kill two birds with one stone, that'd be fantastic. But, again, so if we have, you know, two of our CSOs aren't there, is the positions aren't filled, or the folks are out, do we know?
One individual left, and he's had a difficulty filling that, and then we just had another CSO leave. So based on that last recruitment, we know they're going to have some difficulty filling those positions.
So I guess my, my question in that is, can we, through contracting or otherwise, plan, if there's a vacancy at a particular position, can we reallocate funding for another position? Do we have that ability as part of our contracting process? Can we write that into contracts with those CSD? Because if we, if we can, well, I'm just wondering, if we can, then maybe that's something we can look at, so we're getting, we're getting vacancies filled, or new positions where we can fill vacancies, so we're at least getting some benefit out of our dollars. And then, on the point about, you know, sort of comparing the funding levels, I used to know these, these numbers cold in the campaign, that's now been a few months, and I've dumped all that out of my mind, but I know Dana Point is budgeting about 16 million as well, they're half of our size. So I do agree with Councilmember Ferguson that it does seem like we're a little bit lacking with our sheriff deputy allocation, but if we're not filling those, those vacancies anyway, then what good is that going to do? But, you know, I, I think when we talk to the new chief and he comes in, we can talk about recruiting programs and all that, but, you know, I'd be interested to know what we can do, looking at opportunities, not just constraints, to fill some of those positions and to be creative with what we're doing budgeting-wise. And when was that private parking group analysis done, and where can I find?
That was last fall, yeah.
Did we look at any other companies besides the one I was doing, the park service?
No.
It seems odd that, you know, park rangers can do parking enforcement, but yet they're using a private entity as well. So I'm just wondering if there's other, other groups out there that we could take a look at, perhaps to.
I thought there was like two or three companies that really handled the state?
There used to be, yeah, there was, there was a, a larger number, but over the last few years, there's been a lot of swallowing up of companies, and so there used to be Central Parking, and now they're part of LAZ, LAZ was the firm that we looked at that does state parking and a number of other agencies. I want to say there's probably no more than four agencies that could probably provide that service from a private standpoint, I mean, we could always look at an RFP. Going back to your other count, your other question, Mayor Pro Tim Bain, with regards to, we're coming into the budget cycle, so obviously you'll be afforded the opportunity, I always refer to the OCSD as a menu, so you can order things off the menu, or you can return things from the menu. But your question was more specific, if we're in the middle of a contract and we lose two CSOs, can I take that credit and do something different with that?
Well, it's even more nuanced than that, if we have a position like the two that we, we added last year that still haven't been filled, can we, in our contract, build in, build in a mechanism where we can at least get something out of that, instead of it just being vacant the whole time?
I, I think the short answer is yes, we'll work with the county, Alanya Mata, on the contract administrator, to see what kind of options we would have, because, you know, one option could be like you, you freeze that position and you take that money and you devote it to a different program to fund the remaining part of the fiscal year. I know that OCSD might have some contractual things that they want to reflect those changes from an indemnification standpoint, but I think the short answer is yes, but we'll ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anything else for housekeeping?
No. Oral communications, I don't have any cards.
I think I hear a motion coming.
Yep. The move that we adjourned the next regular council meeting will be held on March 19th, 2019, the council chair is located at 100 Avenue in Presidio San Clemente, California, closed session items will be considered at 5:00 PM, the general session will commence at 6:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ham and a second from Councilmember Ferguson, all in favor? I think it's unanimous, we are adjourned.
I want to thank the council and thank the LTFP team that did all their hard work on this, so thank you.